Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the CCLNE Y webinar on sustainability in net zero. We're just waiting for people to log in and then we'll get started. Thank you.
So, good afternoon and welcome to this seminar and thank you for attending. It is great to see you all here and I should first say this meeting is being recorded. And I do say it's good to see you all here because climate change is the greatest challenge facing our generation. But it's never the most urgent or the top issue on doorsteps. But climate change is more important than potholes. I became the leader of Cheshire East Council in 2019. And at the first meeting, proposed a motion committing the council to being carbon neutral by 2025. We then drew up a carbon neutral action plan, setting out in detail how we would achieve that objective. Now, at this point in a physical meeting, you can tell who the officers are and who the councillors in the audience. The councillors will see nothing unusual in what I've said. The council makes a promise and the officers deliver it. The chief executives will be looking slightly nervous, thinking, well, shouldn't the leader have checked that what he was promising was achievable before he promised it? But this is an emergency. Climate change is urgent. Millions of people will die as a result of climate change and the cost of delay is huge. So we need action now. Cheshire East Council's Environment and Communities Committee has received regular reports on progress towards the target. And I was delighted that the last report said that the target was risky, we might achieve it. So why was I delighted by that? Well, if the report had said that the target was easy and was going to be achieved, then I would be kicking myself for not having set a more ambitious target. I've said that millions of people will die as a result of climate change, but how many millions has not yet been determined. Delays will cost lives. And just briefly, the key factors in our carbon neutral action plan are replacing streetlights with LED lighting, using Solix funding, reducing staff travel, retrofitting our buildings. Macclesfield Town Hall now has air sourced heat pumps and planting trees. We've planted 50,000 trees on council owned land. And that's one of the big advantages that county areas have. We do have lands that can be used for carbon sequestration and solar farms. If you want to know more about our plans, please do look at our carbon neutral action plan on the cheshireeast.gov.uk website. The Cheshire East Council itself only accounts for 1% of the carbon emissions in Cheshire East. So you can see the slide there. This is from the Cheshire and Warrington Carbon Neutral, sorry, the Cheshire and Warrington Sustainable and Inclusive Growth Commission. I like the snappy title because it tells you what our aims were. We want growth, but we want that growth to be green and we want everybody to benefit. And Cheshire East Council has committed the whole borough to be carbon neutral by 2045. And I do recognise that this is outside of our control. But you can see some of the plans there that have been set up, working with the LEAP, with local businesses and local enterprise. I also recognise the points made in the research done by the County Council's network in their 2021 report, Rising to the Climate Challenge. So it's showing that carbon emissions have reduced slowest in county areas. That's partly because a lot of the funding has gone to metropolitan areas. And also because of the difficulties of public transport in rural areas. And if you think about it, you wouldn't put a dirty industry in an urban area. So rural areas have some of the highest carbon emissions. The Elsmeor Port area, which is just across the border into Cheshire West, accounts for 5% of the country's carbon emissions. That area contains carbon manufacturing, sorry, car manufacturing, oil refinery, chemical works and glass manufacturers. There is huge opportunity for cutting carbon emissions and county areas also have the benefit of land. Changing land use, changing agricultural practices can make a huge difference to net emissions. We can plant trees, using cow slurry from the dairy industry to make biomethane, taking a problem and turning it into an asset. The challenge is there, we can meet it and the growth opportunities for the first deliverers are huge. So with that introduction, could I hand over to Louise Sunderland, who is the EY lead partner for local government? Louise.
Lovely. Thank you councillor. Well, it's lovely to see everybody today and we really appreciate your time joining us to talk about sustainability. So I'm just going to do a quick introduction and context setting, both to the team and to what we do at EY. And then walk you through the objectives and agenda for the session. And so you've got three of us joining you this afternoon to talk about sustainability. Firstly, an introduction from myself. As mentioned, I'm Louise Sunderland and I'm the EY partner, leading on local and devolved government. And I spend a lot of my time working on sustainability. And presenting for you this afternoon will be Josh Dunn, who's a director at EY. And he leads all of our work in local government on sustainability and also is part of our wider EY sustainability global team. And then Alana Chesler, who's the senior manager in EY, who has spent time working with our global team across sustainability. But also now works, leading on work across the public sector and Alana will join us for the Q and A. And just to start off with talking about sustainability and how important it is from an EY perspective. So as mentioned, within EY, we have a large global practice that oversees work on sustainability. And we're very committed to everything that we do in sustainability. And we believe that it's really important to have a value led sustainability. And that it's everybody's business to ensure that we meet both the challenges and opportunity presented through sustainability. And it is a really pressing issue and we'll bring to life through what Josh speaks about, about both the opportunities this presents. But also some of the challenges and the work that we're doing with local authorities. And from an EY perspective, as an organisation, we have already become carbon negative back in 2021. And our aim is to reach net zero by FY25. And I know many of you will have very ambitious plans around becoming net zero and carbon negative yourselves. And we have a global sustainability practice and we are seen as a global leader in ESG and sustainability. And we have been for over 25 years. So this isn't something new for us. And we've got thousands of professionals working across the globe, across consultants, engineers, scientists, regulatory advisors. As well as through our consultancy practice, working on sustainability and ESG. And we've got a big practice now working across local government. And we see local government, local authorities as a really key role in driving leadership around sustainability. And we're very committed to supporting both businesses and local authorities. To look at what the opportunities are presented by sustainability and to overcome some of the challenges that it brings also. So we're very committed to this agenda and as I said, have a big team that supports it both at a global level. But also, more importantly, across the local authorities and local government space. And I'll now move on to talk to you about what we're going to cover today. Oh, before I do, sorry, very, very important quote that we've just come on to, which Josh actually will come back to. And this, I think, is very important from the EY perspective, as talking through actually how we are tackling sustainability. But also thinking about, actually, as I said, the opportunities that it brings. So Al Gore said this statement around sustainability, it being the revolution has the scale of the industrial revolution coupled with the speed of the digital revolution. So for many of you on the call who are focused on those drivers economically, this is really important. And as we said, we'll talk to you about how we can look at this from a revolution perspective and the opportunities it brings. And so if I just move on now to talk you through the objectives of the session and what we're going to cover today. And so we're going to cover basically from the objectives perspective, talking about the view of net zero. From all of you as members and thinking about what that means from a local government perspective. And we'll be doing that, talking about it from a place based perspective. And we're going to identify challenges and pain points because we know that some of this is quite challenging. So to bring that to life and what that means and how you can tackle some of those challenges and opportunities. We'll discuss what's possible, bring it back to opportunities in helping local authorities to deliver against net zero. And how you are all key actors and provide leadership role in being able to decarbonise and bring innovation in your local areas. And they will outline some tangible steps that you can take from a local authority perspective to really help that transition. So the agenda for the session is that Josh will go through and talk about what is sustainability. To make sure we're all on the same page and what do we mean by net zero. As I said, talk about challenges and the opportunity, both from a local government context, but also bringing insights from our global practice and more locally. Where we are starting from, challenges that we need to have come. And as I said, we're going to make this place based. So we'll be thinking about actually how this drives inclusive growth, green growth. What that looks like from a sustainable place perspective and the objective thinking back to policy that is levelling up. And then we'll look at some tangible things that you can do to accelerate the opportunity to move to a green economy. And we'll then move on to a Q and A. And Dan's already mentioned in the chat, but just to highlight, please pop your questions in the chat function. And we'll then come back to those and open up for the panel session. So without further ado, I will pass on to Josh, who will then take us through the presentation. So Josh.
Thanks Louise and morning everyone. So I just want to dwell on that quote for another few seconds if we can. So if we just imagine the last 10, 20, 30 years, how much industrialisation shaped probably the Midlands and the North? And how digital has changed everything we do. The really exciting transformation to our sustainability has that scale of industrial revolution will change everything. But it's happening so, so quickly. So this isn't something that will be two or three generations down the road. Most of us in our, our kind of working lives will be getting towards net zero or certainly carbon neutral. So it's really important for the context, anything else we're going to talk about is just the scale. So can we jump on then Dan? Yeah. So what I wanted to start with is just agree on some definitions and what we mean by sustainability and the role of net zero within that. And we will also answer the question you raised Karen, as I'm, as I'm going through that bit. So sustainability has been a term that's been around and used for a long, long time. And it's only really made the top table and become forefront in the last maybe four or five years. So the definition that we use the most is that of the Bratland Commission, which is as simple as sustainability is about meeting the needs of the present. Without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. I think it's a really important sentence again, just to dwell on for a little bit because nowhere in there does that talk about the environment or trees or green. Sustainability as a concept is really, really broad and covers financial, economic and social outcomes as well as environmental outcomes. So really, really broad umbrella. And the two themes you'll hear most about at the moment is ESG and climate change. So ESG, environmental, social and governance is a term being used really heavily in the private sector in the moment. And it's about thinking, how do we drive businesses towards thinking about environmental and social outcomes and govern them appropriately? Rather than just focusing on, say, shareholder value or dividends. It's an important concept, but actually in local government, this is all we've ever done really. We've never been a pure financial industry or set of organisations. We've always had to think about social outcomes, building the economy and long term value. And ESG is being mandated in the transition task force. So everyone in the private sector will be reporting on this over time through disclosures. And we're sure as local government will start to do it sooner as well. So the main relevance to this conversation is around what that means for our suppliers, recognising the vast majority of our emissions as local government will come through the supply chain. The other really core themes to talk about is climate change, which hopefully we're, we're all aware of. But it's essentially weather, temperature, rainfall driven. And that's what drives some of the worst outcomes if we don't get net zero right and we don't manage to limit global warming to one and a half degrees. So what we're going to focus on today is net zero. So again, just within that wider umbrella of sustainability, it's really important to recognise net zero and production in carbon. And why did we have gas emissions? It's just one small part of wider sustainability. There's lots of crossover with other bits. So if you are getting to net zero and you're not burning fossil fuels, for example. You're probably going to have cleaner air, less eco toxicity and probably reduce things like water pollution. So. Sorry, joking around. So really important that we're going to focus on net zero carbon state, but it shouldn't be seen in isolation. It's all linked up with our wider sustainability umbrella. So what's the national context from central gov and kind of UK PLC? So we as a country have committed to net zero by 2050. And we want to play our role in limiting global temperatures to one and a half degrees. And one and a half degrees and two and a half degrees, which you'll hear a lot about outside of this meeting, are really important metrics. As all the science says, that that is our tolerance, the worst effects of climate change happen when we start crossing that one and a half degree boundary. And that's lots of really bad things like flooding and crop failure and poverty destitution. So it's really important that we can limit it to one and a half to mitigate. It's the worst, worst outcomes. But even where we are today, if we keep it below one and a half degrees, there's still a host of challenges and bad outcomes that will be driven. So this is a quick pathway for kind of UK PLC, you'll be familiar with most of these policies. Or announcements specifically on some of the controllable things around electric and net zero vehicles, getting rid of gas boilers. And decarbonising our grid, which is still quite fossil fuel intensive. And this will probably feel really slow to you compared to wherever you are in local government. So 90% or 94% of councils have declared a climate emergency. And by and large, aiming to achieve a 10 or 15 years ahead of central gov. So most councils somewhere in the mid 2030s. And of course, you have some really ambitious councils like the council you just heard from Cheshire East, who are committing to 2025 and that is there. So this is the UK context, but we as local government, hopefully are leading the way and getting there a bit quicker. And the other important context for this pathway is it's kind of stability and reliance that drives investment in the UK. And if you look specifically at foreign direct investment, where overseas countries and organisations are investing directly in the UK. Because of this commitment we've got, even though it's not the most ambitious and it was being reasonably stable for a few years. We're seeing quite a lot of investment come in on the back of it. So the UK had the second highest number of foreign direct investments in Europe last year. And it had the highest uptick we've ever had in green and renewable based schemes. So we had 37 multimillion pound renewable energy generation schemes, over 50 green infrastructure schemes, all invested in, in the UK. And that tells about 1.8 billion pound investment into UK economy will create best part 48,000 jobs. So even this unambitious pathway, you can see for UK PLC, it is driving investment, it is driving decarbon, it is creating jobs. And you'll see a quick poll go into the chat if you wouldn't mind answering it, which is on something where you've committed to as net zero. In your kind of local authority, so pre 2030, which would be amongst the kind of 10% most ambitious councils. 2030 to 2040, which is the majority and there are some that are in the 2040s that haven't yet committed. And net zero for the organisation, shall I also scope one, two and three as an organisation rather than all of place based emissions? Good. So if we can jump on Dan as that poll goes. And so the shift to the green economy is what we're going to talk about a lot. So you follow that pathway through and all the things that are going to change and you'll have your own plans as councils as well. When we wrap it all up and look all the economic and social changes that will drive, we call it the green economy and it really does change everything. So two quick definitions here. So the first one from the UN Environment Programme. And it's saying that a green economy is one that results in improved human wellbeing and social equity. Whilst significantly reducing environmental risks and ecological scarcities, so that's a green economy. And then in 2013, the argument here is that to be green and actually to achieve environmental benefits, we must not only be efficient, but also fair. And I think this is a really important concept across, across local government, that this kind of unstoppable global mega trend that is climate change and sustainability is happening. Our job is to make sure that we're capturing the benefits from it locally, that will help and build a green economy. We're using it for things like social mobility and improved outcomes and not just seeing it as an expensive problem we have to go and fix with, with solar panels or retrofit. So what's the role of local authority? So we've always been leaders of place in local government and a place based approach to net zero is what we're going to be talking about for the rest of the session. This is taking a geographic and a community led lens to achieving net zero. And we are the leaders of place. We also need to make sure that we're empowering and mobilising communities and residents. So no level of change that's been sustained globally has ever been driven from the top down. There's no kind of global mega trend, digitalisation, industrialisation, anything like that, that can be driven centrally and embedded. What we need to do is work with communities to make sure that climate change is working for everyone and drive those benefits at a local level. And play our kind of social safety net role as well and making sure no resident is left behind. And we don't want to recreate some of the economic challenges we've had in the past 50 or 60 years where there's big winners and big losers through a global mega trend. We need to make sure that we're building it for residents now and for generations to come. And you'll see a great quote from Rutter Thunberg down the bottom. So just going to pause on the case for change. So what we've got under sustainability, under net zero is we've got this burning platform in that the consequences of failing and getting to net zero and limiting global warming is catastrophic. It's very bad. And also getting there in the wrong way could be really bad. What we don't want to do is accidentally make swathes of petrol station operators and gas boiler engineers and people who work in car factories all redundant, lose their livelihoods. So getting it wrong and transitioning to the green economy in a non equitable way, it's really bad. We've then got the flip side of it. We've got a strategic imperative. So the benefits are huge. This is a once in a generation opportunity for us to rebalance all sorts of things in a really positive, really positive way. To do things like improve air quality, protect the environment, biodiversity, protect species, social mobility, social outcomes. And lots of other benefits as well. So what we don't want to is accidentally create a further two tiered society. So if we're going to move away or make motor vehicles and cars really expensive to own, we need really efficient public transport. Or again, what's going to happen to our more rural communities as and when that becomes a huge obstacle? Um, good. And, and just before we go into the challenge and what's so unique, I think it's really important that we are leading the way as local government, as mentioned earlier. So we do have some of the most ambitious commitments in terms of time scales. We do have some of the best plans as a sector. So no lack of, of appetite, especially at a political level. I know there's a number of leaders and politicians on the call. I think on behalf of residents and communities, you get it. You know, it's something we need to, we need to do in the right way, but it doesn't take away from it being a big challenge in how we get there. So if we could jump on Dan. So the question is what's stopping us? So if we all agree that there's this big burning platform, we have to do something. There's also lots of benefits from getting it right in strategic imperative. That is the recipe for innovation and acceleration and delivery. So what's slowing us down or what could we do to make us go earlier? So I think it's important that we consider role of the local authority and where we're starting from. And just seen in the chat, 73% of people on the call have committed to achieving net zero in between 2013, 2014. So again, a good 10 or 15 years ahead of the legal requirement or the central gov target. So the data, so scope one, for those not familiar, is emissions primarily from combustion. So that'll be burning petrol or diesel in vehicles or gas in heating boilers. There's other sources, but they're the predominant sources of scope one emissions. And then we've got scope two emissions, which is mainly electricity from the grid, which we still have a reasonably carbon intensive grid in the UK. So for very typical council, you know, half a billion pound council, a few hundred thousand residents. We see typically scope one emissions being around 6,000 tonnes a year and scope two being eight or nine thousand tonnes a year. And this is where most organisations are focusing. So to become carbon neutral, we get rid of scope one and two or we offset the remainder. And it's where most of our effort is now. It's about electrification of fleet, moving to hybrid, all cars and vehicles and retrofitting our, our buildings. And it is very expensive, but it is happening and most of us have decent plans to get there. But if you jump onto the next slide, you'll see how this compares to scope three. So for that typical size authority again, scope three, which is predominantly emissions through your supply chain. There's other bits in there like staff travel and it's predominantly a supply chain of emissions is about 200,000 tonnes a year. So it was a whole order of magnitude high and hopefully you'll see that we've adjusted the scale and it's squished down scope one and two, so much so that you can hardly see it. So if you recognise that scope three is the thing that we're doing that emits most as local government. Why isn't it so prominent in all of our plans? And it's basically because it's hard to do, it's hard to know where we are, it's hard to know what we can do about it. And we don't have direct control over a lot of these emissions. A lot of them are more around influence or commissioning or spec. And what is very helpful is in a matter of weeks, there'll be a new local gov target tool release that will allow you to mission screening on your supply chain. It's free to access for anyone with the dot gov email address. That should help us start bringing the scope through the procurement conversation to the top table by understanding the profile of our emissions through the supply chain. So, so, and then the next one, which is so unique to local gov is we are leaders of place. So for anyone in the private sector or charities, it's scope one, two and three is what they're focused on. But we as leaders of place also need to help our county, our borough, our, our boundaries, whatever that might be, decarbonise. And that is another whole order of magnitude higher again. So again, we've adjusted the scale, but we're talking around two to four million metric tonnes of carbon dioxide or equivalents. As a place and that's just a scope one and two, so in jurisdiction emissions. And again, it makes that whole scale of the other emissions we saw totally disappear. So this is the emissions people who live, work or play within your borough. And like I say, it's predominantly scope one and two. So it's their buildings, it's their offices, it's their shops, it's their homes and it's the way they travel about emitting within jurisdiction. It's much, much harder to change because it's our role as leaders and influencers. But this is the area where we can have the greatest impact if we're genuinely trying to promote environmental outcomes. It's targeting here. We also typically see a far greater return on investment. So something called marginal abatement costco modelling, which is a great mouthful. But essentially what you do is you look at all the initiatives in your control as an organisation. You look at how many tonnes of carbon it could remove or abate. And then you look at the cost and you prioritise cost per tonnes of carbon. It's a really effective tool for prioritising limited funds have the greatest impact on getting to net zero. And what we see is when you start looking at scope three and then a place, you start getting far, far cheaper cost of removing carbon. So there's a great case study coming out of local gov in the next week or so. So London Borough is a bit different, but still a really useful case study. It shows the average cost of removing a tonne of carbon through behaviour change and nudge theory to like social media campaigns is between four and six pounds a tonne. And that compares to the best part of 100 or 150 pounds a tonne for most of the things that we're more traditionally doing. So things like retrofit, building to real excellent or passive house or electrification of vehicles. So far, far greater return on investment. We could have a look at it. Jump on Dan. And just in case we're losing order of magnitude with, with the tonnes of carbon, so that's hard. So all that typical council we talked about, say 15,000 or 16,000 tonnes of CO2. If you were to do that just through planting trees, we're talking about five or 600,000 trees. If you look at place based emissions, just go one, two, three plus place, anywhere urban. So you pick any London Borough or city, if they removed kind of everything, can just add trees. If they removed kind of everything and just had trees, it wouldn't get to net zero. So there's physically not enough space to offset in any of our denser areas. Whereas when we come onto more rural, there's a more interesting opportunity. So finally, you you're seeing that scale in terms of funds and some of the complexity, especially around scope three, us having one of the most unique supply chains. In the country. And again, I think if you look at something like domiciliary care, which for most councils is a real challenge. How do we drive something like that to getting to net zero when these tend to be small locally based organisations struggling to keep their business afloat? Let alone thinking over the next ten, fifteen years how they get to net zero. But there are some really smart things we can do. Again, there's some really great case studies from some councils in the South West, looking at how you can commission domiciliary care. In the more environmentally friendly way. And the findings were that a lot of these dom care workers are working on minimum wage or just sometimes on living wage. And actually, when they get paid forty five pence a mile to drive, that can top up their salary about to a third, spec very specific to rural. Areas that do far less miles in in cities and towns, but basically they're incentivised to drive. If they were to shift over to public transport or bike walk, they don't get a forty five p. So the more environmentally sensible and they don't do because they would lose income as a result. So actually, there's a really nice lever that you can pull there as local gov, change the way you commission, not actually incur any additional costs, but actually incentivise a massive reduction. Commissions through your supply chain. So onto the scale of investments. So these are some pretty terrifying figures. So again, most of us on this call will be used to talking about things in order of millions, very rarely do we talk about billions in local gov. But it's huge. If you look at some of the big cities. Great Manchester, that's part of seventy billion pounds to achieve net zero, West Mid sixty billion pounds. Typical London Borough, two to four billion pounds. These are really, really big numbers. And we're talking about one and a half trillion pounds to get the UK down to net zero. So huge, huge costs involved, which we're not going to fund out of the public sector. The assumption at the moment is around one pound of public sector funding for every ten pounds of private sector investment. A ratio that sounds very sensible on paper, but has not been achieved in real life yet. So there's a big funding challenge. Um, and again, just thinking about that order of magnitude in terms of, imagine what change that could drive. So in all CCM member councils, you will have a social value policy for your procurement, for example. And for years, you will have been looking at five or ten percent of a contract going towards social outcomes. And you know just how much change to people's lives a big contract can make. And these are contracts that may be hundreds of thousands of pounds a year. What I think the really exciting opportunity is, is how do we see that sixty or seventy billion pounds that a region might need? And not see it as a massive cost, but see it as an opportunity to rebalance an economy, create green skills, jobs and the supply chains we all need to thrive. And again, this isn't a future problem. So if you look across, for example, solar, um. You're talking months, a month to wait now to get solar installed. So the opportunity in a pipeline is there and we're waiting. If you look at, um, if you look at the north east, about forty seven thousand tradesmen short to deliver business as usual. Look at South Wales, about thirty five thousand tradesmen short, look within the M twenty five, a hundred thousand tradesmen short. So there's the opportunity now, we're short tradesmen to deliver, there's an opportunity to go. But what's our role as local gov in enabling and delivering that investment and making sure that those supply chains pop up in our areas? Rather than we just keep competing with other councils for the same resources and drive our own inflation. Jump on down. So where are we starting from and what are the challenges we need to overcome? So we think it's easiest to think about net zero as a big mountain range and having three mountains. And we call them mountains because you can't see the next mountain until you climb the first one. So you're kind of climbing into the unknown each time. But this is roughly how they stack together. So you'll start off as an organisation in that strategy mountain. So you're most likely being driven by members to declare a climate emergency. And then you go into that semi panicked moment like, what do we mean, do we mean net zero or carbon neutral across what scopes? Where are we starting from? What is climate change? And typically that first mountain is about figuring out what's going on. It's your baseline, it's your strategy and what you're trying to achieve. When you've got that and you know what net zero sustainability means to you, where you start and what you want to do. You move into this really complex planning mountain, which is where most local authorities are at the moment. And that's when you realise just how expensive it's going to be and how you're going to fund transitions to net zero. You then get stuck in a little bit of a loop of prioritisation and what's next. And then have to make really important, often member led investment decisions. So if you're going to invest twenty million in net zero, what is it you're not going to invest in? Because that money's not just surplus and kicking around. We get into that challenge about playing off competing expenditure items. Um, although if you were to look at how much a typical council spends through its capital programme on regen related schemes, which we'll come to later. Actually investing in transitions to green economy is fantastic value for money. If you then manage to climb that mountain, you can start funding your programme and no council has funded this entire programme. Some have got some really innovative models, so you'll have heard no doubt about Bristol City Lee. I think Coventry's got some good stuff, Greater Manchester got some good stuff. So there are some interesting funding models coming up, but nobody's funded the entire transition. Just yeah, um, lots of ground funding available, but nobody's got it. But if you do manage to fund a chunk of it, for example, retrofit the buildings, you then get to move to challenge or mountain number three, which is delivery. And this is the challenge that we're not really talking about at the moment. So if I had to pick a timeline, two or three years ago, most of us were in that strategy box, thinking, how do we climb this mountain? Where we are today, most of us net planning and funding box or mountain. The challenge not many of us have got to yet is the actual delivery challenge. And I'll give you a quick example. So if you take a typical council housing stock, um, of a very normal, smaller, she has to say fourteen thousand units. Um, will cost you about half a billion pounds to get to net zero on those buildings. But the challenge comes from how you're actually going to do it. So you'd need about eleven hundred tradesmen full time to deliver. In line with the typical, you know, twenty thirty two, twenty thirty five type net zero commitment, so eleven hundred tradesmen. Which don't currently exist. No county or council has eleven hundred tradesmen sitting on the bench, kind of waiting for work at the moment. But then how do you actually manage that? So social housing specifically, people live there with their kids, their dogs, their cats, their fish. You can't just sequentially programme a really efficient scheme of works to go away and retrofit. So that mobilisation and delivery is becoming a real challenge for for us. We're seeing a lot more partnership working happening, so some interesting joint ventures, collaborating cross councils. But we're also seeing some more interest in delivery models being put in place to enable it. And then we get finally onto the last challenge is about benefit tracking and proving it's worthwhile so we can continue on that cycle of investment in net zero and sustainability. So what does this mean for CCM members? Well, CCM covers the majority of the country, as you can see by that map, eighty six percent of landmass is covered by county council members. Um, two thousand six hundred councillors represented across all parties, so really strong kind of political access. And twenty five million residents living in those those areas. A count around half, so obviously way less than half of the residents, way more than half of the landmass, but roughly in the middle on emissions. To the councillor's point that we typically see dirty industries placed in non urban areas, um, coastlines, rivers, things like that. Um, and far lower density of population than obviously any of the areas that aren't members you can see on that map. So it gives us a series of unique challenges for typically more urban versus typically more rural councils, which we'll come on to on the next. Slide. So urban versus rural. So whilst appreciate all members on this call, you have a mix of urban and rural areas. By the fact you're a member of CCM, you will typically have a greater density of rural areas than a lot of the metropolitans or or cities as well. So very much the focus of net zero has been on urban areas at the moment. Um, they get most of the attention, they get most of the funding and they get most of the investment. It's for for some really good reasons. So urban areas give you greater economy of scale, whether it's for retrofit or heat networks or EV charging. But economies of scale tends to stack up, which in turn makes it easier to leverage private sector investment into urban areas. One of the greatest drivers we're seeing for change, one of the most commercially attractive levers you can pull is around heat networks. Um, so when you install a heat network, if you let the private sector do it, they essentially get a monopoly for about fifty years. So it's very, very valuable to them, which means they want the heat network, but that also means they're willing to invest in other things, say social housing, decarb or put in EV chargers. But again, they stack up around where there's lots of waste heat and where there's great density of heat demand, which tends to be far more common in in urban areas. And then in cities, we typically have younger populations as well, which will be more aligned to climate change as a priority. If you look all the polls, we'll typically have slightly more active lifestyle, slightly more likely to be vegetarian or vegan, for example. But then some of the challenges for urban is they can't meet their own energy demand locally. So again, if you look at, pick any poor city somewhere like um Manchester or Liverpool, somewhere around there. If they put solar on every single inch of the rooftop available, they can't meet even twenty percent of demand. That's in the day over summer, so it's impossible for them to meet their own energy needs. Um, and they're going to get increasing grid challenges around connecting, which I think is becoming a new BBC News topic over the last week or so. Around lots of solar schemes coming on, but there's not enough infrastructure to get them to where um the demand is needed. And also very hard to reach biodiversity net gain targets. So new new planning policy, many will be aware of around ten percent biodiversity net gain. Um, and lots of kind of ecological requirements coming down to that, very hard to achieve in an urban environment. So if you can jump over to rural, I can look, oh, sorry, don't jump back, over to rural, recognise um where many of CCM members are today. So it's essentially the opposite of many of the urban points. So it is a lot harder to generate private sector investment. Still some really great examples and lots going on out in the sector. But it's generally harder because the rate of return is lower, which means it's less attractive to the private sector. That lower density plays into it in the same, well, the opposite effect did in urban. And we also have an ageing population. We have far worse integrated transport systems, for example, meaning greater reliance on cars and private transport. And we can't have greater grid connection challenges, actually, when you're spread out than you do in cities. So if you were to conquer massive multi hundred milli watt, uh, megawatt, uh, solar farm just down the road from a town like where I am in rural Shropshire. It would take us a decade to connect it. So whilst scale's smaller, the connections are just as challenging. But on the plus side, we have loads of space. We also have quite a lot of unproductive space in our more rural areas. Where we can match between urban and rural and hopefully start driving some really positive outcomes. So on to the main question. So how can we build sustainable places and use net zero to drive inclusive growth and the levelling up agenda? So we'll, you'll, hopefully you'll be familiar with the concept of place based. So back in, I think, the early two thousands, there was a a concept that was widely debated in our sector called um total place. Which is a fantastic concept around how can we join up all of the public sector, the third sector, have one public sector to deliver outcomes. Recognising if a council does something while it can save, say, the NHS or police fortune. But the way the budgets work, we're not all incentivised to help each other. It's an excellent concept, too challenging to put in place in real life. But the concept of place and recognising communities exists separately is really, really important to all of this. So again, in a big city, you don't just have one city, you have lots of smaller communities, but they're quite hard to define and draw lines around. Whereas the more rural you get, the easier it is to identify a community and easier such is to identify what we mean by a place. Again, I'm sitting here in a round of ten thousand people, that is the community, that is the place. Whereas when you're in a city of half a million, far, far harder to define. And similar with lots of other place schemes, you'll be aware of typically on regen, integrated transport, things like that. Our role as local gov is to convene and to lead and to participate. So use our role of leader of place to bring together public sector, third sector, private sector and local communities to drive the outcomes that they need locally. And I think the context of this, again, for the purpose of this discussion, is that we need to make sure that this is all community centred. So nobody wants climate change or net zero done to them, seen as a scary thing, seems expensive and it's seen as being done at the expense of many other priorities. But actually, through a climate centre, other tool, when you work with residents and they understand the benefits, you'll see a huge uptake in in local support for it. We find it's really important to integrate net zero with wider place shaping. Um, and again, if you look at some typical regen schemes, the value can drive through green economy transition and accelerating green investment. Is far greater return on investment than a typical high street regen scheme or similar. And then finally, really important, take a whole systems approach and we work with not only the community, but every other major player in an area. And make sure that we're all joined up in what we're trying to do. I think we're seeing a lot of people trying to lead and take first move advantages in, say, installing heat pumps, air source or ground source heat pumps. At the moment, the capital is anywhere between five and twenty times more than a gas boiler. But also it costs about double to run. So typical air source or ground source heat pumps about two hundred and fifty percent efficient. So one kilowatt of electricity produces two and a half kilowatts of heat. But electricity is still five times more expensive than gas. So even though it's really efficient, it's still actually way more expensive than using gas. But despite that, we've seen lots of people switch air source and ground source heat pumps. Puts a lot of load on the grid, but the really unhelpful thing that does is then removes that building or that asset from the business case around heat networks, which is far, far cheaper. I'm more excited. So making sure we're taking that whole systems approach, we're being leaders of place and we're trying to join up the communities, businesses and the public sector. If we don't as local gov, there's no one else there to do it for us. So we've got two examples of place based approach to sustainability and that is zero. So one being heat networks, which is a fantastic example. So if you think about um, you know, it's not sure how familiar everyone is, but essentially it's district heat network, it's a giant central heating system in theory. Um, fifth generation is really exciting and you'll start to learn all a lot about it if you're on the energy scene or on the decop scene. So traditionally how heat networks work, you have a big heat centre, it might be from a, might be a recovery, like a wasted heat transfer station, or much of the big gas boiler. But the idea is you heat it centrally, it's cheap, you get economies of scale and you share it around buildings. It's been more expensive than um any other, by the moment, the UK, any other form of heating where you try to electrify it, it's far, far cheaper for gas. But what fifth generation does is it's been piloted in Sweden and it's been demonstrated to be five hundred percent efficient. Which means one kilowatt of electricity can produce five kilowatts of heat. Which for the first time means that this form of heating is cheaper than any other form of heating that exists. So fifth generation heat networks are now cheaper to eat than any form of gas or electric heating that exists. The way it works is by using a distributed model of lots of waste heat. So instead of just one big heat plant. Think of all the air conditioning units going on, all the cooling, things like coal wa- coal mine water dishes, coal shafts, rivers. It takes lots of lower temperature heat and shares it around buildings in a far more efficient way. So it pumps hot and cold rather than just sharing heat. What's really exciting is a lot of really big institutional investors really want to be seen to be having some of these first fifth gen heat networks in the UK. And there's already big competition to get them to stack up. And because they're so efficient, they're working far smaller areas as well. But the trick or the really interesting learning from this is that these are hugely valuable to private sector investors. And you can work with them to drive other outcomes that are harder to stack up. So if you rush to do all the things that have got a cheap marginal cost abatement code, the things that pay themselves very quickly or cost very little per tonne of carbon. You're just going to be left with a big portfolio of very expensive things to do. What fifth gen heat network class is combine it all together and look at how can we use the very profitable heat networks that private sector want to invest with. And couple it with things that tend to have a much worse return on investment like retrofit of social homes. And bundle them together, taking a whole place to approach to to net zero and using highly profitable work to offset less profitable work. And there's, whilst there's no deals being signed yet, there's some really exciting deals happening. And this will work really well in less dense areas because it's so much more efficient. You don't need to have huge heavy demand. It can work on much, much lighter demand based buildings. And then the other concept just to introduce is called a green premium. So this is the whole con, this is Bill Gates, if anyone hasn't read uh How to Cover Climate Emergencies, it's an excellent read. And introduces the green premium concept, which essentially says it doesn't cost forty thousand pounds to buy an electric vehicle. It costs ten thousand pounds more than a petrol or diesel vehicle. So the green premium is ten thousand pounds. And it removes us away from making climate change and that's a look really expensive. And instead we can focus on something, the premium we're paying for going green and is a premium in most cases. Very rarely is getting to net zero and invest to save. So if you do it on utility savings alone, other than things like solar and PPAs, it's very hard to get it to stack up. Um, but actually, when you look on a green premium basis, it's still really good value for money. So if you take that a more of a place based layer or even a whole um council layer, look at green premium. And let's say that you're gonna invest in a hundred EVs, so it's gonna cost you a million pound more or hundred grand. Kind of the maths, a million pound more. Um, the really exciting bit about green premium is then if you look at what that million pound can drive in terms of jobs, outcomes, upskilling. It becomes incredible value for money and the return on investment is far higher, as mentioned, than a lot of your typical regen schemes for different lands. If you can then layer in a whole life approach to green premiums, it becomes even more powerful. And a really great example is if you look at retrofitting, say, your lighting. So an incandescent bulb, like an old school bulb that gets hot, might last a couple of thousand hours, say two thousand hours before he's replacing. Thoraxon might last ten thousand, LED might last a hundred and fifty thousand. But what most could do is build in a business case saying it will save excellent electricity, so it'll pay for itself in seven years. If you layer in the maintenance saving, it might pay for itself in three years. And then if you look at the way you're going to buy that rolling replacement LEDs and the jobs of social value it can create, it might pay for itself in as little as eighteen months. So taking that broad approach. months. So taking that broad approach to green premiums on a place-based level, you can really understand huge benefits from investing in green. And that narrative alone around green premiums, we're finding is unlocking lots of investment and more effective prioritisation of councils. Yes, Janet, it is, it is indeed. It's about taking waste heats and waste cooling and taking it to the place that it's needed at a low temperature. So it basically gets rid of all waste heat and uses that all purposeful heat. So it's really, really cost effective way of heating and cooling buildings. And I think even in all of your counties, you'll no doubt have huge heating bills with current electricity and gas prices, but you'll have a load of air conditioning units in your server rooms or pumping other things. And what we're finding is data centres and exchange centres are becoming the resource of the twenty first century. So go back a few hundred years, it was coal that was our resource that made lots of towns and cities very wealthy. Then we had oil. What we're finding now is actually a really valuable resource is waste heat. And you can recycle it in such an efficient way that saves the people calling a load of money, saves you a load of money as occupiers. And then you can use it to target things like people poverty and social mobility. So it's a really exciting technical development that we've seen. And the last example I'll just quickly give on this slide is how there's some really novel and exciting technological advances that will work really well for more rural councils. So there's I'm hoping it's going to hit the news very shortly, but there's something called the enhanced rock weathering that's been piloted in both Australia and New Zealand. And it basically takes waste resources, things like basalt or dunite from mining operations and through some overly complicated carbonisation process, it essentially car, carbonises, it reacts and creates new carbon deposits, which can be safely stored for millennia. What it needs is large swathes of open land, round rainwater and groundwater, which we don't have again in towns and cities. The latest pilot from New Zealand government is that it's costing about sixty eight pounds a tonne to remove carbon through rock weathering, advanced rock, accelerated rock weathering and similar schemes. And the cost to offset good quality tonne in the UK is just hit seventy pounds. So new technology has become available really quickly. The only work is where you have lots of land and other natural resources with no detriment to farming or anything like that. You can carry on doing whatever you've been doing. But very quickly, this will start to stack up. And if as per the most recent EUID projection, we hit a hundred and twenty pounds per tonne for offset or sequestration by twenty thirty. And we do look at a marginal cost of payment curve, what I mentioned earlier. There's dozens of technologies that can stack up in more rural areas that can justify and generate that investment we need into our local areas as a result of transition to green economy that can then let us spend and fund other things that aren't so attractive to the private sector. So a really exciting point actually for our more rural councils about where we now need to become front and centre in climate because the cities can't do it without their more rural counterparts. And then we're just going to wrap up with a quick roadmap before we go to questions and answers. So the route to net zero, it's quite important to to think about actually, because this is a global mega trend. It's, it's something that's happening. It's not a project. So actually the traditional lens we take about how do you get something done doesn't really apply in the same way that most of us in the nineties weren't necessarily had a digitalisation strategy and roadmap that kind of happened and we got with it and made it work better for us. But we didn't drive digital revolution out of local gov. It's the exact same as route to net zero. So really important, we consider this as something that's happening, external factor that we want to take advantage of to improve outcomes locally. It's not a project that you can really easily understand kind of in Excel or on a plan on the page. It's way more complex than that. So the five steps that we're proposing around roots net zero. So one is begin and build. So this is no doubt all of you are, but identifying leadership and moving it to the top table. So we've always done environment, biodiversity, sustainability, energy is local gov, but it's only been the last few years it's reached the top table where we've got dedicated assistant directors or directors, dedicated project managers and a cabinet sponsor from a political lens. But most of us are getting there now, really important. And then scope and baseline. So really important to understand where we're starting from and actually define what we mean between carbon neutral, carbon negative, net zero and across what scopes. It's one of those things, it's very confusing and misuse, but we need to align on what your understanding is and what you're trying to do as a council. And it's all okay. Then need to work with our local communities, take that place-based lens, we talked about, map out all the external stakeholders, the big businesses, the big energy users, the wider public sector that we can work with. And then start taking that more business lens, moving to discovery, which is where marginal cost curve and other techniques come in to help you prioritise where you're going to invest your limited funds for the best return as part of transition to green economy. And then finally, delivery, which will last for decades. That's what's really important. We don't set it up as a really simplistic project, but think about this as a ten or twenty year trend or march towards a different outcome and set up appropriate governance and project management to follow that through. So I'm sure you've had enough of me talking for like forty minutes. So just before we go to questions and answers, just wanted to wrap up by saying, I think the message for us around climate change is don't see it as a big expensive challenge. It is that. We see it as a once in a generation opportunity to drive the kind of change we exist in local gov to do, not only on social outcomes, the economy, creating jobs. It's about momentum, not perfection. So the most important thing is to make no regrets progress. You don't need to have an end to end detailed plan because technology is evolving so quickly, you'll become redundant straight away. And solar is a great example of that, where the last seven or eight years, it's eighty percent cheaper than it was, and it's almost twice as efficient. So if we were doing a thirty year plan back in the twenty teens, it'd be totally wrong now. So again, momentum, not perfection. And final message was taking that place-based lens, making sure we're all working with communities, strive the outcomes that matter to them and try to embed the change rather than just do technical change like retrofit and EVs. Good. I'm hand back to you, I think, Louise.
You are. Great. Thanks, Josh. And we'll start to open the Q and A. Thank you for all of the rich comments and posts in the chat as we've been going through. We'll start to answer some of those questions and please keep communicating with thoughts as we go through the Q and A as well. I think one of the things that's really resonated throughout just watching the chat and going through is an understanding that obviously we're all on a journey with this and it's not as simple as some of the things we've laid out. And actually, that richness of understanding and learning from other places is really crucial as well. Alana and Josh, could I have you on camera, please, as well?
Wonderful.
Thank you. So from a panel perspective, we've got councillor Coram back as well as Alana, who mentions where in my, in local government sustainability and Josh, who's obviously gone through and just presented. And we'll pick up the questions that we've had posted. And I'll ask the panel to come in and give some thoughts and responses. And as I said, please do keep populating thoughts in the chat. So to start us off, if I may, there was a question around recent announcements around the progression towards hitting one point five degrees temperature increase recently and what can be done locally to mitigate this. So Josh, would you like to have a go at starting us off?
Yeah, I mean, we can get to net zero as quick as we can and do our bits. Make sure we're demonstrating leadership and that things can work at a local level, but really importantly, use our privileges, leaders place to help create the supply chain, the jobs, the skills we need to actually get there as society. So we quite often get people that's like, what's the point when a council's only half percent of emissions locally or things like that? It's not necessarily about the missions we can get rid of as a council directly that drives the change and gets us one and a half degree pathway. It's the leadership and the creation of the supply chain skills and jobs and demonstrating it's commercially viable is the really important thing that we can do so that others can, can follow suit. Back to that chart you saw on the scale of place-based emissions versus our own, our job is definitely enabling place-based emissions reduction, not necessarily just retrofit in our own buildings.
Wonderful. And that was from Giles and Janet. So thank you for, for those questions. And moving on to talk about Scope Three, which we all know is a challenge. But also a significant opportunity. So Scope Three is the greatest opportunity to reduce emissions. How will this impact procurement plans and activity going forward? So Alana, I wonder if I can come to you to start us off as we've recently done some work and some thinking around this. And then I'll open up to other panel members. So Alana, would you be happy to start us off with some thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. And hi, everybody. It's great to be here today. And also just to echo fantastic questions. I hope we managed to get through, through all of them. On the procurement and Scope Three questions, so absolutely, we know that our, our own supply chains, our own value chain, I think, is responsible for about six percent of the national carbon emissions. And that's, so we can directly have leverage and influence over that. And so if we think about the value chain of our suppliers, it's broken up into their scope one, their scope two, their scope three. So we can kind of look at it through that lens and providing things, support and enablement. Clearly, it's all about the leverage and support and the influence. And what we found recently in a project where we worked with some councils in the southwest of the UK, was thinking about the collaboration and the dialogue and very much having stakeholder engagement to work out what are the preferred interventions, what are the preferred support mechanisms that as procurement officers can put in place to make sure that we can all achieve those kind of outcomes together. So there's probably a little bit more that we could say about that, but I could see that there's lots of questions coming through. I guess just to summarise that outcome of that recent project, we do see that even in very high emitting sectors, there's absolutely interventions that local councils can take to have real impact. And I think Josh alluded to earlier in the presentation as well that that there is now readily available information and data on Scope Three emissions for councils that we can help you access as well, if that's helpful.
Great. Josh, anything to add on back of Lana's comments?
Actually, there's some really great examples coming from local gov on Scope Three, specifically on goods and services rather than wide skips. So just, just category one. But if you look at the change we managed to make as local gov when we introduced social value policies, social value calculators, which, which was huge. We're seeing the same happen now around green commission. So we need to be intentional. We need to make sure we're designing things in the right way, commissioning the right way, but then really importantly, managing through its life from the right way. So tying up design, tender and actual contract management levers, which is really hard because not many people have done it. So it's not like there's a whole suite of two hundred we can look at and quite often complex procurements we take that we did before and look up dating it. But sometimes that's not the right way to go. I think that Don Care one's a great example we mentioned earlier. But again, from places like Surrey, Sussex, Brighton, Kingston, that kind of patch around that, we've seen some really interesting procurement led activity coming out. So Royal Borough of Kingston upon Thames was the first customer aware of the commission to net zero facilities management contract, which is its biggest or second biggest contractor as a council. It'll be net zero by twenty twenty five, but through designing it in the right way, also delivered a financial saving, which nobody was expecting when it went to market, but it just so happened the highest quality score was also the lowest cost and had the highest environmental score in there. And it's true, putting the right weighting on environmental aspects as part of procurement. So enough to incentivise, but not so much it can be gained to the detriment of other things. And just on supply chain, if you look at typical council supply chain, it's like two hundred thousand metric tonnes of emission through Scope Three. If you were to offset it all at today's cost, about sixteen million pounds. If you were to offset emissions in that by the twenty thirty cost, about twenty five million pounds. So very rarely do we calculate that. But actually, the cost of not supporting supply chains in net zero and the council wanting to offset against there is huge. Like if you take an average council, about three hundred million pound budget, could be eight percent of their budget would go on offsetting if you think about it, which is a great driver to change through the supply chain.
I see there's been a couple of requests for the case study. So I guess we'll, we'll take that offline if we can, include it into the into the pack, so we set clear, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And also I think sharing what other people are doing as well, because obviously there's lots of activity. So we can look to make sure that the follow-up is also sharing of what's happening. So to think it's still a learning space for everybody. There's a great question to lead us on and councillor Coram and I can bring you in into this one, if I may, to start us off to actually then think about how local leaders can help drive transition for their local areas and work collaboratively. And interestingly, and I think this came up in some of the comments, obviously we've talked very much about the local level. We're not dismissing that there is lots to do from a central government perspective. It's not just obviously here in this country, we're tackling this. There is a, a global imperative as well, but it'd be great to hear councillor Coram about maybe some of your insights and thoughts about kind of that local leadership role and what could be done at a local level to help areas transition.
Firstly, to thank Josh for his slides, which really make the point that, you know, the scope one, scope two are dwarfed by scope three, which is in its turn scoped by the wider emissions from the borough. I quoted that for Cheshire East Council, we account for one percent of the emissions of the borough. So the real big prize is the one that is least within our control, but we have influence there. So the main message from this would be do what you can. So if you can reduce the emissions in your council, do that. But the bigger prize is the influence that we can all have as politicians to change the agenda, to make sure that other people change their emissions as well. And generally, businesses open to that. They welcome it. To give one specific example, we've had a very high profile project of two of our refuse wagons are now dual fuelled hydrogen diesel. Very high profile, new technology. It's great that we are trialling it. It's not going to make much difference to the fuel, to the carbon emissions across Cheshire East. But by trialling that technology and demonstrating it, demonstrating hydrogen generation on site, that will encourage others to adopt that and to start thinking more about how to reduce their carbon emissions. So it's the leadership role that I would put out there. And simply by advocating these things, you can make a difference.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I think that's absolutely right. And interestingly, as we saw in the poll, there was a high percentage, I think it was thirty eight percent of people that responded on the poll about where you're tackling. It was all three emissions and place-based. So again, looking back to that place-based agenda, really thinking about kind of being inclusive, understanding the place and driving that kind of system leadership role, which is a huge opportunity that local authorities can undertake. And there's an interesting question around terminology, which is quite often one that trips us up. And just to think about, actually, Josh, you started with talking through what, what we mean and definitions. But there's a tendency for the terms carbon neutral and net zero to be used interchangeably within communications when it comes to talking about area-wide emissions. You know, E G, carbon neutral, net zero counted by twenty thirty. Is there a meaning, meaningful difference that can be articulated to residents, businesses between the two?
Yeah, so there should be. They are used way to interchangeably, but general kind of consensus, how the word's being used is carbon neutral is around scope one and two and allows for offsetting. Net zero is all three scopes and doesn't allow for offsetting or very minimal carbon sequestration. So like in the minority. So the challenge with carbon neutral is if you want to cheat, which I'm sure none of us do, any of you could become carbon neutral tomorrow. You go on an offsetting website, type in your emissions and pay them a few grand and you're carbon neutral. But that's obviously not what we want to do. So I think doing it in the right way is really important. That's why people start thinking that's a little differentiated between the words. There's no agreed upon and recognised definition. I think that's what we mean. As I've sort, I'm sure councillor Coran, you're not just going to offset it all tomorrow, right?
I did want to come in on that because we, we addressed this precise problem when we set out that there are some emission, emissions that will be very, very hard to get rid of. We decided not to go for offsetting, paying somebody else to take on those emissions. But we have gone for insetting. So I mentioned Cheshire East Council has planted fifty thousand trees on council land. That is to inset those residual carbon emissions that we can't easily get rid of. We will so offset them, but within Cheshire East borough and within our own control.
And if I could just extend that, that theme of insetting, because it's really interesting and also helps kind of redirect capital flows. So given the example there of trees, there's also obviously supply chain intervention. We were talking just a moment ago about that. So the, taking that capital allocation that might go to an offset, but redeploying it back into the supply chain in order to support carbon reduction there is obviously a win-win kind of technique.
Absolutely. And if we've seen funding come up, so we'll go on to that. Is it worthwhile just touching on the questions around swimming pools and leisure centres for investment in offsetting? Josh, do you want to come back on that one?
Love to. So I think it was Devon has got a really great example. So we mentioned fifth generation heat networks earlier, which is just the concept of moving waste heat and waste cooling and joining them. So rather than just moving hot around, how do you move around the things you need? A great case study from Devon where they've used a waste data centre. A great case study from Devon where they've used a waste data centre, a school, it's a tiny data centre, you know, no bigger than the desk you're probably sitting at now. And it can keep the whole pool about thirty degrees, which, you know, the the challenge again, all that temperature is the first lift, right? So. That's just waste heat from a little thing. So instead of an air conditioning, a data centre and pumping it all out externally, they're pumping the heat into the pool and it just uses waste heat. So massively drives down. The cost, but that's how the whole of fifth generation works is it just uses low temperatures. So anything between minus and thirty degrees, so not really hot or really cold. Moves into a building, then uses an electrified heat pump to essentially extract the heat or the cool from them, pump it into the building, sort of a second conditioner. So. It is a heat pump, but a much smaller, more efficient scale. I think that's the way we'll go to leisure centres. So. Every every leisure centre will be based somewhere where there's a data centre nearby, whether it is just a school. Commons cabinet or whether it's the council building or private sector, but there will be something within piping distance of there. I think we're going to see a lot more of that. Coming very soon, just because it actually stacks up as a investor.
Great. And then drawing us back to talking about place based, which is obviously a key theme for what we've spoken about. Talking about the intersectional approach to sustainability and net zero. And making sure again, kind of, we've got that inclusive lens. So as we all know, it's always very challenging to. Make sure that priorities are fully understood. So. Josh may be talking through to start us off, and then I'll come to you, councillor, if I may, around the. Thought process in balancing this strategic priority across the other strategic priorities from a council using that kind of place lens.
Yes, I think transition to green economy and that broader concept will support nearly every other. Council aim, whether it's keeping people living independent for longer, whether it's jobs or skills or investment. I think when we take it as a as a ban in a broad lens, actually does support all of our. Wider priorities, long vision, connectivity, transport, everything. Almost because it's such a new concept, we haven't really integrated it properly into our. Way of thinking in all instances yet. So it's often led by a climate team and some very passionate councillors and. What we need to do now is expand it so that it's in the minds of every kind of middle manager or senior officer in the council. We're driving it through everything we do. And then I'm hoping that, you know, within the next few years, we won't be talking about sustainability as a distinct thing. It will just be part of everything in the same way that we talk about. Jobs or social outcomes or digital now, just really integrating part of how we do businesses, local government.
Yeah, I think that points back to think about place based outcomes. So you were able to measure against it, but actually it's integrated in your strategy, your corporate plans, and actually it's an imperative. Across councils. Councillor Coran, is there anything you'd like to add on that? Because as I said, obviously you've got your fabulous. Picture you showed us earlier on, which shows that intersectionality across your borough.
I think Josh has said pretty much what I was going to say. It's what the background thinking is what you want to get changed and the mentality there. I mentioned at the start of my talk that climate change is the greatest challenge facing our generation, but it's never the most urgent. Having just gone through an election campaign, potholes were mentioned far more often than climate change. But if you can, I think we need to lead here as leaders. We need to be concentrating on climate change and not be distracted. By dealing with the urgent issues that will come up. And I would qualify that immediately to say, well, of course, we're going to address potholes because we want to get reelected.
Right. So those front of mind issues that are. Are part of it as well, as well as the longer term thinking that's important. A couple of questions that have come up, Josh, on what we presented kind of on our approach. So this goes back a little bit to talking about funding as well. So. Thinking about actually any work that we've got, thinking about outcomes, so how you get the investment in place. Obviously, Josh. We presented some fairly big numbers around the challenge that's presented and obviously funding is core to that. So any thoughts? On funding, obviously, Lani started talking about that capital reinvestment and any innovation around it.
Can I just pick up quickly with a with a further comment on the intersection piece? Because just to bring it alive a little bit, just with reference to Covid, which I think is a case study we can all. Recall fairly easily, where there was a lot of unintended outcomes across different ethnic or minority. And we do see kind of unintended consequences. So it's visible as well in our area of sustainability, which we're obviously talking about today. And noting that we're not trying to displace emissions. So we need to look at that whole life cycle piece. And I think Josh also mentioned that the transport piece that we can't, we need to be mindful that we're not pricing out. So. Socio economic factors too. And I suppose that kind of segues in into how we fund this. And making sure that we're thinking widely around vulnerable groups and across all our demographics, all our socio economic indicators. To make sure that we're thinking wide as well, not to have those kind of pesky unintended consequences of actions.
Thanks. So yeah, I've just seen the summary of the question in there. So I think on outcomes and business case, if anyone wants a separate conversation, it's like. The thing that I care most about at the moment is that it's overwhelmingly positive to invest in acceleration of transition to green economy. We're just not very good at calculating or articulating it. So when you look at typical capital scheme. What most people do is they apply a couple of formulas and it will create eight hundred jobs, which is good. But when you're looking at the value from climate, it's far, far. Broader. So it can do really wild things. Like if you improve public transport and you improve air quality, you can reduce asthma and all the associated thing. If you can promote active transport, active travel, social prescribing, you can reduce obesity and reduce diabetes, massive value. But if you just track that value chain through. It's such an overwhelming number, the return on investment, that it almost loses meaning. So most things where you used to, if you get. A ten or twenty pound return on investment from social terms, we're delighted. A lot of this climate green economy stuff is hundreds and hundreds of pounds return on investment. It just sounds so large that it's. Obscene, but it's really there, the benefits. If anyone does want to talk about how HM Green Book strategies, so Green Book business cases. And being used properly to evidence investment in, so you know, I think it's one of the tricks that we could nail. We can really start accelerating investment in this area because it is really good value for money. And that links perfectly on to the funding point. So if anyone on this call was at UK Reef last week, I've been leads, I can see some councillors from Cornwall on the call. I know Cornwall. Were quite well represented as were Cumberland and Westbourne, and quite a few I can see on the call, actually. You'll have heard from all the big institutional investors from LNG and Roy's, the infrastructure bank and the Green Bank, there's billions and billions of pounds waiting to be invested. In sustainable outcomes, retrofit. And then at the same conference, you'll have heard from lots and lots of public sector, we really need money to make it happen. It's our biggest obstacle. So on the one hand side, everyone's saying, but loads of money want to invest. On the other hand, people saying, we need money to make it happen. All we need to do is start taking these concepts into a pipeline of projects or investable propositions and show how they work. And we can start unlocking massive investment really quickly. And lots of tools play a role in there, whether it's. I mean, in settings, a really interesting one for us in local love, which has the potential short term to drive millions of pounds in. Wouldn't propose it being a permanent revenue stream because it means someone's limiting loads, but it's a really great way to pump prime some locally. Things like setting up charities and climate bonds with useful ways. Ultimately, if you bundle up. Projects in the right way, you do your margin payment cost curve modeling and stack them in the right way. We should be able to invest in an awful lot of this, especially over a lifetime of what we're looking at. Heat networks, forty or fifty years, retrofit twenty years. I think. Somebody is, the money's there, the demand's there. The thing we've got to do is develop the commercial models that link up those two things. And some of these are really novel commercial models that aren't. Tried and tested. And wouldn't want to put any down on PFIs, but. When PFIs were set up, everyone thought they were a really good idea. And what they did do is they unlocked a lot of investment in leisure centres and schools otherwise wouldn't have happened. Right now, though, we're all like, PFI is probably not such a great idea for what they've done. And we tried to get out and spend a lot of money doing so. I think the important thing for us as we're developing new commercial models is not to do that, because that's not sustainable. We don't want to do something now that we got at work to us now and then leave massive problems the next ten years. To be resolved. So new commercials, but understand that risk tolerance to the remodels is. Is absolutely key. I think someone did ask, are we doing some research on it? Yes, we absolutely are. We're working. With Adapt, which are normally members of, and CCN to look into this area. So to hopefully help you build those business cases to justify. Accelerated investment in net zero.
Brilliant. Just also in there, it's Louise Fournay.
Of course.
On the, I think there was a comment there in the chat around central gov and the kind of pace of change and. EY as well as, I'm sure many of you responded to the fairly recent Skidmore review, which obviously came out with some specific pointers around. Local authorities. And one of the points, if I recall, was around around the funding element specifically. And we, I think the only funding scheme that we've mentioned by name was the Salix finance so far on this call. And obviously, that's competitive. And I think it's important to mention that. You know, it's hugely draining to go for competitive funding options, takes a huge amount of time and investment and you don't know the outcome. So. I think it's probably fair to say that we'd like to see a lot more funding available that's not on the competitive side of things. And like Josh said previously, which. We think the money's out there and it's just a question of linking the financing with the project and getting a lot more. Slick around doing that.
Thanks, Alana. And as I mentioned, you know, Josh mentioned, obviously, our strategic partnerships with both CCN and Adapt. We see this as. Really important that this agenda is a key strategic agenda for us. And obviously, we have lots of links back into central government. So. Kind of drawing the dots where we can, looking at some of the challenges and opportunities that presents to help move this agenda forward is really important. I'll ask one more question if I may, and then I'll pass over to councillor Coran to close. And this came up at UK Reef, Josh. So this isn't. There, but I'm just picking up Janet's point around behaviour change. So obviously, we did some, we've done some work around this, just. With one of our clients recently, but it was a key agenda that came up. All last week was talking about both leadership, but also about really shifting the dial on behaviour change. So you've got any. A couple of reflections on kind of what we heard last week would be great is the kind of closing point and then I'll hand over.
Yeah, so it was, we had a breakfast up at Reef with a number of council, we were looking at this exact point that you've. Range, range, raised to Janet. So when you look at cost per ton removed, it is our influence and behaviour and nudge role that has the strong. Absolute strongest return investment by miles and miles. But then if you couple it with our enabling role, it can be a phenomenal success. So there's a great case that we can share with anyone that. Things and wants to know more about it. But essentially, embarking on social media campaign, Facebook, TikTok, Twitter, those kinds of platforms. Buy different videos to do split testing or receive thousands, thousands of views for about seventy five quid. So very, very cheap to promoting at these views. And the maths works out that if zero point five percent of people made a kind of ten percent change, so like, one of them was on. Walk or get your bike to work. And the argument was if zero point five hundred watched it, just go out of the car one day a week, it would work out between four and six pound per tonne of carbon. That we can abate. If you then couple it to some of the other things the council wants for, so public transport, active travel. By craze to further accelerate it and you can join these two things up. Really fantastic value for money. And the bit that we're doing now with them is mapping out the other benefits. So yes, it might have avoided several tonnes of. Carbon. And the average house is under two tonnes of carbon a year, right? So actually, if you can get someone out of a car, which is a similar amount per year, it's as good as retrofit in a whole house. An awful lot cheaper to get someone's public transport and retrofit of a house. But we're now mapping out the other benefits for things like clean air, pollution, travel, congestion. Values to the economy. I think what we'll hopefully be able to prove in a few weeks' time is that the one thing every councillor has, having this action plan, has this role as. Leading necessary behaviour, enabling residents to live more sustainable lives because it's literally, it's thousands of pounds to drive thousands of tonnes of carbon worth of change.
Lovely. Can I just say thank you all for answering the questions on the panel? And thank you all very much for the brilliant questions that we've had, because it's made for a really rich conversation. May I hand back to you now, councillor, please, to share your reflections and closing remarks?
So, thank you very much. I think the main thing I wanted to get out from today is a call to action, and that's come forward very clearly. The other side of it is how much we can do. And there's a huge opportunity here for councils to be leaders and particularly for politicians to be leaders. Cheshire East Council is responsible for public health as well as many other things. And that fits in very well with the climate change agenda. If we can provide decent housing by retrofitting the houses to make them more fuel efficient, that will also benefit public health. If we change people's diet to eat less red meat, that will benefit public health, but also reduce the carbon emissions. And the ideas that come out today, do share these ideas. And County Council's network is a great opportunity to do that. You can have a look at the twenty twenty one report that I mentioned on the County Council's network website. But also, please do borrow, steal, nick ideas from other councils. I've mentioned about Cheshire East Council, but I know many other councils have done good work on this, which they are very willing to share. So I hope that I've enthused you and that you've taken something away from today. Please do go out and implement these ideas, because the more we do and the sooner we do it. The more impact we have on reducing climate change. So thank you very much and goodbye.